I'd like to welcome you to the August 13th, 2018 meeting of the Marquette City Commission. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please rise with me and say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, could we please have the roll call?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Plord?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Campana?
Here.
We have the agenda in front of us. Would someone care to make a motion to approve it? Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Is there a second? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That passes, seven zero. Tonight, I just have one announcement. It's in regards to the openings that we have on our different boards and committees. The city has about twenty boards, committees, authorities, made up of resident volunteers. The committees exist to study and advise the city on areas of concern within the city. Because of term limits and turnovers, we're constantly looking for residents who are willing to volunteer a few hours of their time each month to help make Marquette a better place. Couple boards that have a lot of openings, one is the Board of Zoning Appeals. There are currently five openings there. Another one is the Harbor Advisory Committee, which has four openings. We would like to get some residents to volunteer to fill these openings. It is an opportunity to do something productive, you meet some good people, and you make Marquette a better place. If you'd like to step up and volunteer for some of these committees, please contact any of the commissioners here, call the city manager's office, or go online. We depend on our residents to make things work here. Come to boards and committees. Tonight, we have one reappointment, and that is for Nina Vanen Neney to the Traffic Parking Advisory Committee for a term ending five thirty two thousand twenty-one. Is there a motion? Commissioner Plord?
Your Honor, I move that we appoint, reappoint Nina Vanen Neney to Traffic Advisory Committee for a term ending five thirty two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries also seven zero. We come to our first public comment of the evening. Public comments are time when residents may address the commission, or they can reserve to time to speak on one of our upcoming business items. You have three minutes. We need your name and your local address. I'm going to open public comment. Would anyone care to address the commission at this time?
Margaret Brum, four oh four East Magnetic. I'm going to talk fast because I have three things to mention. This Wednesday at two PM at Clark Lambros Beach Park, there will be a demonstration of a beach accessible wheelchair. This is from my church group. If you can see this, the video's on my Facebook page right now. The chair came this afternoon. It was put together in under an hour. We went out to Lambros Park, and we were able to take Sherry from her car into the water, and she actually ducked in the water and was able to be extracted using this beach wheelchair with no damage to the beach grass. Nothing had to be done to the slats that are there, that are there to protect the beach grass. This beach chair is accessible. So if you or anyone you know is interested in beach accessibility for people with mobility challenges, please join us this Wednesday at two PM at Clark Lambros Park. I have permission of Sherry and her husband Lenny to use their names, and it's on Facebook right now under my name, Margaret Brum. So I would encourage you, because it's an opportunity for the city of Marquette to advance in the area of accessibility to our beaches, and it's also an opportunity for individuals to understand there's products out there commercially available that can really help. So that was the first item, Wednesday at two. Second item. My mother wanted you to know that the people you hired to dig up the road, to fix the sewer, and the water employees that came to, when they found the water pipe was basically Civil War era, that they are good, hardworking young people and should be commended for their efforts. And this is from my ninety-one-year-old mother, who has no problem not commending people. So I wanted you to know, these guys came early, stayed late, were polite and professional, and never stopped. The reason I don't have pictures of the crew that worked our street is I couldn't get them to stop to take a picture. So the work you're doing with the sewer and Obastar to fix that block of magnetic, you're getting your money's worth from those people, and I really, really appreciate it, as do the people on our block. And they moved their equipment once because one of the people on the block was blocked in their car, and the person was going to drive on the sidewalk. And they moved all those big pieces of equipment to get out of the way so that person could get loose. And the third thing. We would like to thank the city of Marquette Police Department and the city manager for working on the parking problem on Presque Isle. We realize it's like herding cats to get people to park in the right spot, but we appreciate the signage, we appreciate the patrols, and we only wish that eventually people understand there's places you can't park for safety reasons. So we wanted to share that with you as well. I got it all in with five seconds to spare. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Frank Jeff Verido, three fifty East Ridge, Marquette, to speak on items seven, eight, nine. These are my opinions. A July thirtieth question on local TV read, "Should portions of the Hartwood Forest be developed as commercial, retail, or residential space?" Of the three hundred eighty-nine responses, twenty-one percent chose yes, and a whopping seventy-nine percent responded no. Even if three eighty-nine isn't the largest sample size, and we don't know what percentage was local, the results speak volumes. And the great majority think more along my lines concerning the preservation of our natural spaces. And here I'm in the twenty-one percent minority, believing that some should be developed because that was the deal when we purchased the property, three hundred and fifty-six acres out of the two thousand three hundred seventy-three. And here, I didn't like the way the question was worded, making this outcome all the more telling, that seventy-nine percent want none developed. Well, I'm with them now. Why these two disparities? You've done enough. No, that's not what the people want. Oddly, Mr. Stackwitz mentioned two thousand two hundred forty-three Hartwood acres, a disparity of one hundred thirty-three acres compared to the original news release. He also mentioned the eighty acres sold to the landfill. But November twenty-eighth, two thousand eleven, this board sold the landfill one hundred acres, seventy of which they never need except for logging revenue. Why these two disparities? Which is it? Still, no member has looked into the original news release, so by now, all seven have taken ownership of an apparent lie by avoiding this observation. A few years after its publication, I verified the figures on the city website, so I'm sure they're correct. June twenty-fifth, on a strategic plan item, this board was told, quote, "The plan calls for a citizen survey, which suggests this board may be putting the cart before the horse again. It's more logical to conduct the survey first in order to assemble the most effective plan possible." Instead, you're publishing a plan without adequate knowledge of what our residents' priorities are. You'll motion to approve it just to get it off the agenda. No one's willing to wait or to amend anything. It's all or nothing. My recommendation is to wait until the citizen survey is completed instead of ruining our opportunities in the eleventh hour, end quote. They ignored the advice and went right ahead and sold Hartwood property under Mr. Campana's misconception that he felt, quote, "Good about the sales of the parcels. It couldn't have been a better outcome. Everyone got what they wanted," end quote. Now we know roughly seventy-nine percent of us did not want that. That's how far out of touch he and his cronies are with the public sentiment. Much of what I've warned this board to avoid has become evident. A dozen examples, not because I have a crystal ball, but from analyzing demographics and spatial geography across forty-eight states. I know how places grow. Our latest example is being more bluff destruction, an iron gate that separates our park from a club, and a new no trespassing sign. Mr. Mr. Plord ranked fourth in the vote tally. It's apparent we want to change.
Anyone else wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we're going to close public comment. We're going to move to presentations. Tonight, we have two presentations. Our first presentation is the lobbyist update. We have Matt Curda of Karube and Associates of Lansing here. Matt, if you will take the podium, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the commission. Always an opportunity to come up. Always good, any day out of Lansing's a good day, especially a day above the bridge. Also want to say hello to the two new commissioners. I haven't had a chance to meet yet. Looking forward to working with you as well. What I put together here, and this won't be an incredibly long presentation, but feel free to jump in as you feel appropriate with any questions or comments throughout. But I wanted to put together a summary of issues that I've been working on over the last two years. This is quite comprehensive. It really encompasses items that I would report back to the city manager as needed, as he and I remain in contact. And we had put the arrangement together two years ago, and the city had chose to hire a lobby firm. At the time, we had chosen to direct any communications that I have back and forth through the city manager, which has, in my opinion, turned out to be, I think, a very efficient process, and I would assume so as well on your end. So two main items I wanted to talk about here, summary of items we've advocated for or against over the last two years, kind of put forth in bill form. Most ideas are either would be a for or against certain legislation, but also some more conceptual issues or topic areas that we've worked through. And then also, the second point, a little bit about relationships and strategic objectives going forward, suggestions for working collaboratively with other players in the region, and different opportunities that we see coming due to some significant legislative change coming forward this summer. We can talk through that a little bit in detail. So I grouped these issue areas really in four, I believe, four different categories. So the first category, I would put natural resources, recreation, environmental. These are five topics in particular that we've had dialogue on. I know the first, I would kind of put the first two together. Short-term rental legislation, we'd had some discussions on in the past, and as we get to the close of this current legislative session, anything that has currently been introduced or midway or anywhere in the process would have the ability to move further before the end of the year. However, at the end of the year, everything ends, and we start a new. Short-term rentals is one issue that we had monitored that had a bit of momentum last year, then stalled out. We're hearing that that might be picking up a little bit more momentum here, probably in the lame duck session, when the legislature comes back together after November. We will see what form that takes at the end of the day, but as of right now, the bills are merely placeholders. We would see the House bill be the most likely to move, and there continue to be discussions between groups on multiple sides of the issue. But I would say, given that the city has been proactive in this area, has worked through an ordinance, I would suggest that now would be a good opportunity to shape the discussions in Lansing, should we see fit, possibly provide some guidance to groups like MML, who are engaged on the issue. I think we have a unique perspective to share up here, and that is one item that the city manager had tasked me on a follow-in pretty closely, but wanted to report back. If we do want to engage, you know, possibly use what we do here as a model for other communities in the state to follow, that might be something we would wish to pursue. It can be quite a complicated area, but it is something the legislature does want to take a look at in lame duck. We shall see if it gets all the way through. We only have about fifteen, sixteen session days left for the remainder of the year. The middle item there, recycling grant opportunities, recycling solid waste reforms. The bill that I have marked there, Senate Bill nine forty-three, this was a proposal by the governor to increase solid waste tipping fees to pay for a, essentially, not only an expansion of recycling and recycling infrastructure in the state with the goal of increasing the statewide recycling rate, but also to find additional funding to pay for CMI bonds that are expiring. Twenty years ago, the state did a Clean Michigan Initiative for brownfield cleanup. That money's drying up, and there's, so far, has not been a fund source to replace it. State general fund is not likely. So the governor proposed in this bill not only increasing the tipping fee to pay for recycling efforts, but also to fund yearly brownfield redevelopment and cleanup. Faces certainly an uphill fight. A tipping fee increase is obviously never very politically popular, but we shall see if this goes anywhere in this lame duck. That bill is kind of tied in now with the various workgroups that have been working on recycling and solid waste reforms. So really, you're not going to see one happen without the other. But that, all that work that's been done over the last few years with respect to solid waste and recycling has now come to head, kind of in that vehicle bill. E-bikes is an issue that we weighed in on. This was legislation basically to provide that certain classes of e-bikes would be allowed to be used on certain non-motorized trails unless prohibited. Local governments and the state would still have the ability to do prohibitions, but that is more of a allowed unless prohibited bill package that moved through. And also, the Northern Michigan Sports and Recreation Authority. That was a, that is an ongoing attempt to try to carve some money out of essentially the state Cobohaw deal for sports and recreation projects in the northern part of the state. Got a little bit of a start this spring, and that's kind of been bogged down, but something that we've been following closely. With respect to, I would say, a financial category, obviously continue to follow dark stores legislation, not going anywhere in the near future, but something that we've been following and intimately engaged on in a number of years, essentially codifying the, I believe, the Supreme Court or the Court of Appeals decision a few years ago. Rural development, now with the operation in full bloom at the new mine, there is funding in the Rural Development Fund. I would encourage the commission to pursue working with Department of Agriculture and Rural Development. Grant funding is now coming out once or twice a year, and they've, they're accepting applications for different grant funds. There is preference to communities in which the mine is located, obviously, Marquette County. So that's something I would encourage the commission maybe to consider or keep in mind, and we can always provide assistance there as well. And then I listed a couple other items that we have followed. The last in particular, this has caused a lot of consternation throughout communities in Michigan over the last few months, utility personal property tax reductions. This is something that we don't see moving on a fast track. However, it is, there are workgroups meeting in Lansing to try to figure out what to do in response to this proposal, which would essentially reduce future utility personal property taxes, with the potential trade-off being increased utility investment and distribution Again, with respect to infrastructure, number of items here, some bills that we are monitoring on behalf of the city, some bills that would have a direct impact, such as we weighed in on the prison conveyance. We also had arranged conference calls to talk about stormwater discharge. Marquette is one of, I believe, eight communities in the state with a particular, unique stormwater discharge fee structure. There's been some court cases in southeast Michigan that have prompted legislation to review whether or not it would be appropriate to establish a state framework around stormwater discharge fees. We've also had meetings with Department of Military and Veterans Affairs, and brought the city manager down to talk about army relocation. And there's some other bills there for you to review, some that are part of the way through the process that will, may move this lame duck, some that will not. And then finally, under issue summaries, I just kind of wanted to talk about in general, there's a number of items I did not list here. Generally, with respect to local control, local control these days is kind of used in the eye of the beholder in Lansing. It's kind of thrown around whenever it works best for the user. We continue to keep an eye on anything that would affect local control and report back to the city, oftentimes working in conjunction with other local government groups throughout the state. And so I wanted to mention a couple items here before I close, kind of what we, things that we do, opportunities that we identify that aren't always expressed in bill form. Obviously, there's a significant election coming up this fall. Every eight years, you see a greater-than-average legislative turnover, and that is one area where I would suggest it's, there's a value in the city having eyes and ears in Lansing at the Capitol, when we are going to have a complete changeover, not only of all the statewide offices. But if you look at those numbers in the middle, forty-two of one hundred and ten in the House, twenty-seven of thirty-eight in the Senate, nearly half in the House, about three-quarters in the Senate of a complete change. And in an era of term limits, oftentimes, it can be a struggle to get a message out to legislators who sheerly by will or by means of turnover, through no fault of their own, it takes a while to get up to speed on what's going on. And we're going to see the greatest changeover that we've had in the last eight years this year. You may see some changes in partisan control as well, which could throw a different wrench into the equation. So those are areas that we feel that it's important for the city to be engaged because of the work that you're doing here, because of your status as really a leader in the region. Folks often will be interested in our perspective, especially with respect to what's going on above the bridge. And then I also wanted to put a couple points in there, which I had talked about a few years ago, in that because of your status as a leader in the region, oftentimes people, when they look to UP issues, they often, you know, Marquette kind of has a leadership role there, and I think it's an important role to continue to fulfill. And so we try to take time to work with legislators, work with other groups as opportunities come up, to identify opportunities for the city, or also to identify oftentimes legislation or ideas that may be of a concern, when we can try to work things out before they're ever introduced. So that being said, you know, as far as strategic objectives for the upcoming session, I would suggest if there's particular issues the commission would like to pursue, always available. I think a new session always can present concerns, but can also present opportunities. And that being said, I'd like to stop there and really answer questions from the commission, and thank you for the opportunity to work with you over the last two years. We've enjoyed it and hope to enjoy working together in the future as well, and can't say enough about the communication between the city manager. We communicate on a regular basis. I try not to bother him too much, but I feel we've established a great working relationship, and also an increased presence for the city in Lansing. So I will stop there.
Thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Smith?
Thank you for the presentation and for coming up to Marquette. Could you please share what other organizations or municipalities that you represent? I'm just curious who else you or your organization represents in Lansing.
Sure. So we work with, we represent Wayne County. We also work with some different trade associations that are involved in local government, the County Road Association of Michigan, the Road Commission of Oakland County in particular. We also work with the Michigan Municipal Electric Association. So in fact, I'll be coming up, we have a conference in Escanaba coming up in another month, so another opportunity to come north. But as far as other units of government, those would be the only direct municipalities, local or county or association that we work with.
Thank you.
Commissioner Frazier?
Never feel bad about bugging Mike. You should be opposite Mike bugging you, really. I think the garbage fees, that some people don't bring garbage into Michigan and dump it off, is that why they raise the fees? Is that what's going on with that stuff?
Sure. It's, so Michigan, for a long time, has kind of been lower than neighboring states with respect to solid waste disposal, or what are commonly referred to as tipping fees. Now, these would not be the fee you pay in relationship with a holler. This would be on the state level. A number of states impose surcharges on landfill disposal as a way of generating funds for recycling or other funding environmental work throughout state government. Michigan is historically lagged behind neighboring states, and so the governor has stated a goal of increasing Michigan's recycling rate or doubling Michigan's recycling rate in the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. He has made the argument that logically, if it's a cheap state in which to bury garbage, possibly, you know, increasing a fee, what he's proposing is to increase the fee to the regional average. Right now, we're at about thirty-six cents a ton. He's going to, I believe, somewhere in the neighborhood of four dollars. It would be a seventy-four million dollar annual increase to the state, and then they would take that pot of money, divide that up amongst brownfield cleanup, amongst water quality monitoring, amongst recycling grants to local units of government. So the argument would be getting that up to the national, to the regional average could increase funding to promote policies that increase recycling. An uphill battle, to be sure, but to your point, Commissioner, the main argument being right now, we, as you've heard before, many, especially in election seasons prior, you know, we import a significant amount of the garbage that's landfilled, in Michigan landfills, from some states afar away as Florida, actually. So the argument would be, if you place the surcharge, you're actually generating a lot of the revenue from out of state, being a net positive to the state. However, I'm sure anyone watching this on the other side of the issue would not like that characterization and would disagree, but that is the, why the governor's made the proposal.
I guess that's great, not allowing everybody to bring garbage into our state. Although there is a ski hole, I think, though, but it's made out of garbage, so that could be bad for winter sports. You never know.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Matt, question. Between now and the end of the legislative session, what would you see as the number one threat to the city from the legislature?
I would worry about Senate Bill ten thirty-one, honestly. But honestly, it is difficult to tell at this point, really, what's going to be moving in lame duck. I don't see anything that is of a direct threat or concern. I would see a number of issues that potentially could be, could have negative consequences. You know, we don't, we don't know what's going to happen with respect to short-term rentals. There's probably room to work things out there, but the bills as introduced, I know, have caused a lot of concern. But I would say right now, probably, ten thirty-one has created probably the most consternation amongst local units of government throughout the state. And obviously, we have, with respect to utility personal property tax, we have some big challenges on the horizon there, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Nice to meet you, Matt. I guess, you know, I'm the newest guy here, so I'm going to serve up a newest guy kind of question to you. Lots of what I'm hearing here, and I appreciate the work you guys do down there for us, but it's gets going, fizzles out, gets going, roadblock, time for a break, everybody just kind of kicks it to the side. Lots of big topics, all the big stuff that we, you know, read about and see on the local and statewide news, with dark stores and recycling and all of these things that you mentioned for the most part. What I'm looking for is a victory. I'm trying to find something instead of, you know, give me, give me something that I can go, yeah. So is there something in your bag of tricks there that we can look back and go, this is something that we got accomplished, or because of this, this is, you know, give me, give me something if you got anything on you right now.
Sure. No, that's a fair question, and if I had that in the bag of tricks, I would have led with that right from the start. You know, the last two years really have been a lot of identifying challenges or legislation of, that would be problematic for the city, and working to slow those down. Not a lot in, with respect to specific legislative victories, a lot of relationship building, but as far as a, as a specific item that I would have led with, I would defer to the list right there. I also would say, one thing I would like to engage more with in the city moving forward is identifying certain grant opportunities, such as some that were listed. For example, rural development, especially in the world of recycling, I feel that there's other opportunities that we should pursue in greater detail.
And I guess, looking at this list, to have a list like this is a victory in itself. That means that we're being proactive, we're exploring more than just one or two things, we're dealing with the hard topics, you know, the short-term. The short-term rental thing was a long battle for us here, and I think that we came up with a pretty decent program, and, and it was because the people told us what they wanted, and we had countless meetings and all kinds of process that went along with that. So I think that, you know, there's something, just the fact that we have these items, and we're, and we're not just concerned about a couple, we're concerned about a lot, makes us, you know, I would hope the leaders that you allude to when you, when you were talking about being part of the Upper Peninsula. Thank you.
Well, Matt, thank you very much for coming tonight. We enjoyed the presentation. You are our voice in Lansing, as you know, you specifically watch off for Marquette, so we value that relationship. I hope you keep up the good work, and we'll see you again soon.
Appreciate the opportunity, and call anytime.
Thank you.
Don't leave your contract as one of the agenda items.
Okay, our next and final presentation of the evening is going to be the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. We have Chair Walt Lindell here to present to us. Walt?
Well, good evening, yes. Let me take a quick moment here to get technical here and get this working, so. All righty, good evening. I'm Walt Lindell. I am the Chair of the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, which was established in nineteen ninety-one to serve and work with community services, the Arts and Culture Division, and serve as liaison with the City Commission with Arts and Cultural Programming. We are a full committee. We have our total lineup of folks, and we are very happy about that, and we do take the challenge very seriously, because arts and cultural programming has become a mainstay in the city of Marquette, and these folks that are on the committee who give of their time are doing excellent work on it. As a matter of fact, one, Liz Beckman was instrumental in assembling our slides this evening for the PowerPoint, so if you see her, say thank you. Our purpose and mission is to advise the City Commission in its effort to support, facilitate, and grow an empowered and vital arts, cultural, and creative community in Marquette. What we do is arts advocacy and community engagement, planning and economic development in relation to arts and cultural programming, grant administration to get programs and maintain programs in Marquette, placemaking and special events, and working to develop public art within the city of Marquette. The question comes up, what's art got to do with it? Well, we wanted to show you a few things of what's going on. This is a photo from during Art Week with the Marquette City Band performing at the Marquette City Commons. Arts and Culture provides a basis for many community events. You can see it's a very well-attended show, bringing people into the downtown. The annual Halloween spectacle, as you can see from the shot there in the, the lower right-hand corner, several came out in what would be even sort of typically questionable fall weather in Marquette to come and attend the Halloween spectacle, which moved to a new location this year along Harlow Park on Bluff Street, and it is one of the key events that we look to continue into the future. Also, it brings people in to do things like this, this painting class as part of Art Week at the Ordock Brewing Company. It brings people into places that perhaps they may not normally go, but they may do things that they normally do not do, in terms of getting out and being creative, painting and interacting with others. And also, arts and culture intertwines with parks and recreation. We are very pleased to see that as the master planning process is going right now with arts, or with parks and recreation for the city, arts and cultural programming is a key part of that, mainly because the, a lot of the events and activities are held in some of the city parks and public areas, and it's important. One of the big ones, of course, is the installation and rededication of the Father Marquette Park, which many of you are at, which brought together multiple stakeholders to reinforce the future of Marquette with a park that a lot of people for a while didn't even know existed, and now is a showcase on the shores of Lake Superior here in Marquette. Arts and Culture does bring revenue into our community. We'll have a series of photos here that you'll see primarily during Art Week, but there are other things that go on, where people come into town and they want to check things out. Locally-installed art on the wall here at the Zephyr with some live music and people enjoying themselves, it's part of the experience in Marquette. Ordock Brewing Company was during Art Week with more live music and a place to hang out and enjoy what there is. It makes for a very enjoyable time. This is this year's installation. Interesting. I have it here, so it must have went somewhere down, downstairs. Well, anyway, I'll tell you about it. It's the installation that you see at the, the walkway by the Zephyr, and there we are. And this year, it's butterflies. Last year, you know, it was umbrellas. Became one of the most photographed locations in the Upper Midwest and shared on Facebook. And that was because there was a, a partnership between public art and private business to make that happen. I'm not sure what's going on here, I'm just hitting the button, but this is from Art on the Rocks, and this is saying that it shows you that art knows no age. Young people, and how shall we say, more seasoned individuals, working together to create art and have events and activities, and arts and culture bridges all generations. This also is an example here, is arts and culture enriches communities. This is working with Alzheimer's patients in our community to give them the opportunity to be creative, make some art, and just get out and, and live an enriched life. One of the things I wanted to make sure that you knew as a commission, that we are very strongly in advocacy of and working is regional partnerships. Very exciting to hear that with the previous presentation from the city's lobbyist, talking about Marquette and regional partnerships. The City of Marquette Arts and Culture Center, the Arts and Culture Committee, and the people involved with it have been working very hard in the last year in particular to foster various partnerships. You can see some of the stakeholders there, QPAD, the Lake Superior Community Partnership, Travel Marquette, Michigan Film and Digital Media Office, Central, UP Regional Prosperity Initiative, all of them working together to create arts and cultural programming as one voice. But the key to remember on this is that Marquette is the leader, the city of Marquette is the leader. The Upper Peninsula Arts and Culture Alliance is a group of stakeholders that came together from a series of tourism, recreation, local and regional government groups, planning and economic development groups, and others. And where was the first meeting? It was in Marquette, because Marquette is looked to as the leader, as the model. It's good to think about Marquette as being the model for the rest of the UP and the rest of the state when it comes to arts and cultural programming. This group, the Arts and Culture Alliance, is working to be able to answer the question that I get a lot, which is, what is arts and culture, what is it worth? What is it, what does it bring into the community? This group will be working on an economic study, economic impact study over the next twelve months, that I hope to in a year from now be able to come to the commission and say, well, we actually have some finite numbers. And this is to represent areas across the Upper Peninsula, but again, led by Marquette. Here in the state of Michigan, the Michigan's creative state, according to numbers from, that were taken a few years ago, is three-point-six billion dollars. You can see how it breaks down in terms of state tourism, direct revenue, nonprofit direct tourism spending, and nonprofit annual direct expenditures. Breaks down into several different categories, performing arts, museums, programs. Twenty-seven thousand jobs in the state of Michigan in twenty-fifteen were tied to arts and cultural programming and events, and I know that number will increase. This is for the nonprofits alone, one-point-two-five billion dollars in the state of Michigan come from the arts and cultural programming and nonprofits. Performing arts, museums, community arts, education, those types of categories are underneath that. Marquette is a key stakeholder and a key leader in that, because people come to Marquette for the arts and culture, and the people that live here enjoy the arts and cultural programming that is here in Marquette. Arts and culture, again, brings revenue into our community, which is an important thing to remember as we look forward to the future. The future for us is this economic impact study, continued public policy, public art policy development. As you know, we have a public art commission now in the city of Marquette, thanks to the support of the commission, and we appreciate that, which is separate from the arts and cultural programming area and the office. It is somewhat separate, but it is a part of it, so that is there. We also will be maintaining and developing a creative residence program where people visit Marquette. This is tied in with groups like the Marquette Chamber of Commerce and Evolve Marquette, where people come, creatives come from around the country, not Michigan residents, but people from around the country. We had this recently, we're going to do it again, where people come to Marquette to do what they do creatively, but the part of them coming to Marquette that's important is they have to tell their story, using their social media pages, whatever it may be, their own articles, what they write, they have to tell the story of coming to Marquette. So it's an important part of it. Maintain and develop arts and culture in park recreation programs. Again, a prime example of how that works is go to the Father Marquette Park. You will see locally-created art there that has as an historic component, and also has a component of looking forward and making it a accessible space for many to use. And to continue in assistance, organization, and development in community cultural events, this is everything from Art on the Rocks to Hiawatha Music Fest, to the Blues Fest, to Art Week, and all of those types of things that you see. Now, before I take questions, I wanted to have an opportunity to give you an, see here what I'm talking about when it comes to partnerships. This is a video that I'm going to show here for you that is created by Travel Marquette, the regional marketing agency for the Marquette area, that is being used internationally as a marketing tool that takes a look at arts and culture in Marquette. This is important to keep in mind, because I had an opportunity last, during the UP Two Hundred to speak with Dave Lorenz, who is the Executive Director of Travel Michigan, and they are shifting away from the recreational marketing. They feel like they have done what they can with recreational marketing for Michigan, and they are moving into, over the next twenty-four months, into arts and cultural programming. So, once again, we're the leader, and here's a group that decided to say, at least, let's, let's do that. The volume here may be a little bit low, so bear with it, but here we go.
I'm Charlotte Stewart, Charlie to my friends, and I'm a local Marquette painter. Check, check. Is that good? I love being involved in the art scene here in Marquette. We have so many wonderful artists, and so it's just, it feels, it feels good to be an artist in Marquette. I paint mostly in oils outdoors. That's kind of the traditional plein air painter's medium is oil. Plein air is French. The French really started the outdoor painting thing. I love painting, I love the outdoors, so if I can paint in the outdoors, it's just kind of a wonderful combination of things. There are always challenges to that, though, you know, you have mosquitoes and you have flying sand. They say that if you have some, a couple of dead mosquitoes and some sand in your painting, it proves that you really are a plein air painter. So I had the wind flip a painting off my easel. It went right upside down on some rocks, which had sand on the top of it. I couldn't get it out, it's still in there, but I like it. You don't realize until you get outside and work in the real environment how much there isn't to see in your photographs, but you have the natural light, you get the beautiful colors and the shadows. You'd be amazed what you can do with little twigs, they make pretty good brushes. We have a really thriving art scene in Marquette, so we certainly have plenty of material to work with, and with Lake Superior, the shoreline, we have a lot more trees than we have people in the Upper Peninsula, but the city of Marquette itself is very picturesque. We have wonderful, beautiful buildings, two harbors in the Ordocks with the hills surrounding and everything. There's a really special feeling about Marquette. I don't, I don't know how to express it better than that.
So there you have it. That is an example of what Travel Marquette is using to tell the story of Marquette, and that's what we are trying to do by using arts and culture to tell the story, bring people here, and we certainly appreciate the continued support of the commission. We know that we have your support, we hope that continues into the future, and will be happy to answer any questions and talk about any of the issues that you may have with arts and culture, so thank you.
Thank you, Walt. Commissioner Reynolds?
No questions, just two comments. One, again, always, it's always a beautiful presentation, arts and culture, I guess I would expect that. The other thing, just a comment I wanted to mention, as you continue to hone in on regional partnerships, I do consistently see that from your group, and it's awesome. I, I see Tina every few weeks at some event that's chamber-related or something, and then all of your board members as well, so I really appreciate how much you're getting into the community and develop, helping those regional partnerships succeed.
Wow. Does this get me to wow you, or?
Walt, you've set the bar really high for PowerPoint presentations. As somebody, as this commission, I think, sometimes suffers through many of them from different departments, and that's perhaps not too strong of a word. You have really shown how it should be done. So, Mr. Manager, I'm hoping that in the out-years, we'll have a different level now of PowerPoints from our different departments. Quality counts. You know, we have so much to be, to be proud of in Marquette, and you can just go down this list and it goes on forever, but certainly, arts and culture is right up there amongst the top, and it's, it's just a very special part of this community, this city. And it's amazing to be around town and to see it going on in different places and different ways, and many of the times, there's no credit being given for it, it's just happening. I mean, it's a smaller group that maybe somebody's doing a, a teaching program of, of watercolors, and it's going on over here, and it's not in the paper, it doesn't show up, it's not splashy, but that, that activity is, in itself, just so very important. So thank you for all you do in the commission, rather, with the committee, and certainly thank you for Arts and Culture Division, too, and Tina Harris, for your leadership in this. Thank you.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you. I'll chime in. How can I not? After going through and going through the presentation ahead of time, I knew that, you know, it was going to be lights-out, awesome, and it was. Thank you for that. But I'm excited to see what you're going to come back with, with the economic impact. I can only imagine. I don't know what you guys don't impact with what goes on, and especially in the summer months. I'm not going to kid you, you drive me out of town some, some weekends because I need to get away from the people. It's a good thing, but, you know, for, for me to, to see all that, and I'm proud of every aspect of it, doesn't matter if we're talking about an art-related or music-related, sports-related project, doesn't matter. I'm excited about all of them, but there are times that I just got to get away. So I'm, I'm, I can only, I can only imagine what the economic impact will be, and I'm looking forward to that. Thank you for doing it. It's not, I'm sure it's not an easy thing. You guys got a lot on your plate, so keep up the great work. Thank you.
Commissioner Plon? Commissioner Schlegel spoke about economic development, but talk about quality of life for a moment. I had a conversation, I haven't had a chance to talk to you about it, Walt, you and I work together on a lot of different things fairly closely, and I was at one of the meetings for the Arts and Culture Alliance, where people not only said, yeah, we want to know, we want to be better at it in our city, but we want to know how you guys are doing it, we want to learn from Marquette. And I had a conversation over the weekend with a small group of people, talking about how it's obvious that the city of Marquette promotes art in many, many different forms. A great thing your, your, your organization has done is you haven't defined art, you haven't said, this is what we say is art, and you, you work hard against that, but what you do is promote art in whatever form people seem to want to create or express themselves in. And the city of Marquette is gaining a big reputation now as a city that does promote creativity and create art, and it was fun to have that conversation with people to know about that.
I would just like to echo that real quick, because I know you have other things to get to, but one of the key things here is that we realize that arts and cultural programming is instrumental in the placemaking of Marquette, whether it's where you live here, or you're visiting here, or if you visit here for some reason and you come back and you vacation, or ultimately move here. And with, with development projects, with nice places to live and all of that, with buildings and everything that are going up and, and that's happening, and places are being converted and built, you also have to give the community someplace that is good to live at. Arts and cultural programming does do that, and I guess I would leave it at this, is that a good example of arts and cultural programming coming together is go to the Father Marquette Park. Look at the displays that have been created there. The Beautification Committee, the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, the City, Parks and Rec, all coming together to create a gem on the lakeshore that combines all of this for everyone to enjoy.
Walt, thank you very much for coming here tonight and presenting. I think the city realizes what a good job your committee is doing. The Arts and Culture Committee is very active within our community and responsible for a lot of valuable happenings within the city, so keep up the good work, and thank you for coming.
Appreciate the support, and we'll see you soon.
Next, we come to the consent agenda. Someone care to make a motion to accept it? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Commissioner Schlegel for a second.
Second.
This is a roll call vote because it contains resolutions. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plard?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes, that carries, seven-zero. Next we move, we have one item of unfinished business tonight. That item is Daybreak Charters' lease agreement. If the City Clerk could please give us the background?
Thank you, Mayor. Background. John Tomczek, owner of Daybreak Charters LLC, has requested the City Commission consider relief of annual slip fee at Cinder Pond Marina. Accordingly, as consideration for this agreement and in lieu of monetary rent, Mr. Tomczek will be required to provide the city any combination of goods, services, and funds in an amount not less than $3,812 annually. Staff has worked with the city attorney, and Mr. Tomczek took draft a standard lease agreement which provides for terms and conditions of the request. The term of the lease is April 16, 2018, through December 1, 2020. It should be noted that the request and subsequent partnership has been approved previously by the City Commission. Mr. Tomczek has proven to meet obligations assisting city departments with mooring field installation and extraction and being available for police department use requests. The proposed lease agreement was introduced at the Commission's July 30, 2018, meeting and approved as recommended to move the lease agreement forward to the August 13, 2018 meeting. Fiscal effect: The Cinder Pond Fund will not receive $3,812 each of the three years of this agreement with this approval. Recommendation: Approve the lease agreement with Daybreak Charters LLC, including seasonal slip fee relief at Cinder Pond Marina, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign it. Alternatives as determined by the Commission.
Thank you. Someone care to make a motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I motion to approve the lease agreement with Daybreak Charters LLC, including seasonal slip relief at the Cinder Pond Marina, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign it.
So then a second? Commissioner Plard?
Second.
Any comment, Commissioner Stonehouse?
I think it works out very good for the city. It's a good deal. Certainly, it's a great advantage to be able to use a professional charter operator, somebody who's licensed to operate the vessel by the Coast Guard, as well as have an inspected vessel to work from. That's not like somebody just going down and using a private boat. This is a professional operation, and I think the city police divers particularly deserve to have that level of support. And whether it's working to put the mooring field in, which otherwise would be a great difficulty without having that kind of support, or other dive team-related training, it's important and it's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Plard, anything?
Nothing I can add. Mayor Protem Stonehouse covered it all.
Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? Let's try that again. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries, seven-zero. We come to new business. Tonight, we have three new items. We have three items on new business. The first is lobbying services contract renewal. City Clerk, could you give us the background, please?
Thank you, sir. Background. At its meeting on August 8, 2016, the City Commission approved a contract with Carew Associates to provide lobbying services for a term not to exceed two years. The existing contract is set to expire on September 1, 2018. The city manager requests the City Commission consider approving the attached agreement, renewing the service for another two years through September 1, 2020. The new agreement has the same responsibilities as the existing agreement, providing for twice annual in-person visits in addition to representing the city of Marquette's interests before the Michigan Legislature, Governor's Office, and state governmental agencies. Fiscal effect: This contract is for a term of two years with monthly payments of $3,000, which includes normal expenses. All extraordinary expenses require prior approval by the city. The fiscal year 2018 budget includes funding for this service. The fiscal year 2019 budget will require allocating $3,000 per month. Recommendation: Approve the contract between Carew Associates and the city of Marquette for lobbying services. Alternatives as determined by the Commission.
Thank you. Would someone care to make a motion? Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to approve the contract between Carew Associates and the city of Marquette for lobbying services.
He didn't ask to speak. He did not ask to speak. Whatever nine is. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Frazier. Do we have a second? Commissioner Plard?
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Frazier?
Can we just save some money? Mike, can just have Sarah do it for us? I think it's great. I mean, it's great you guys give good support, but, you know, Rep. Sarah's, just tell everything you know of to Sarah and save us some money, you know, group.
Commissioner Plard, anything?
Just to say, Matt's been available to us pretty much as he says. We can call him anytime, and we do. City manager uses his services. Then Commissioner Sarah Kimbenzie did vote no when we first went to approve the contract, and she consults with Matt very often, as we find out. So, Matt, you've been very, very useful to the city, and I know you're going to continue to be useful to the city as well.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, may I call on the city manager to speak to his experiences with Ms. Carew?
That would be good. City manager, please.
Yes, we, the lobbyist has proven to be, we are talking about the lobbyist, right? Okay. I was trying to get the contract straight. The lobbyist has proven to be, I think, a very valuable thing for the city. I consider the first two years to have been somewhat of an experiment to see how it would work out. I felt confident when we started, or when we agreed with the first contract, that it would prove to be valuable, and I think that has proven to be the case. If I could go back to Commissioner Schlegel's comment earlier or question regarding victories, my response would have been very similar to Matt's in that if we could stop legislation, I consider that a victory. We haven't really utilized this service to push anything through yet. It's been mostly on the defense, which seems to be the norm a lot these days, and I think it's proven very valuable. I think one of the, a couple of the legislative things that Matt talked about were very concerning at the times, at the time they came up. It was very beneficial for me to reach out to him with questions, concerns, information, seeking information about how the legislation was being formulated, maybe even the between-the-lines kind of information that you might not normally get from reading, just reading it straightforward. You know, Matt mentioned that a lot of the current legislation seems to be directed at taking some of the local control away from local units of government, and those are always of concern. I'm not saying that they're always a bad thing, but they're certainly things that, if they affect us, we want to know about, and we want to be able to either intervene on the positive or the negative. And the two cases that come to mind for me are the short-term rentals. If you recall, we were in the midst of writing a lengthy ordinance, and at the same time, the state was writing an ordinance that would have wiped ours completely out. And not that we were against the state ordinance, it's just that by working and getting the information that we needed from Matt as to what the state was trying to put forward, we were able to at least proceed with our ordinance under the understanding that some things could change. The other thing that's popped up recently, and Matt didn't mention it because we haven't talked about it a whole lot, is that the state is making an effort to try to take some of our control away related to property appraisals for tax assessments. They want to shift it, or they're considering shifting it to the county level, which has pros and cons, but having Matt work with me on that legislation kind of gives me a better insight as to what the end goal is, because often the end goal isn't always what it seems. I've found in working with Matt that a lot of this legislation is pushed or propagated or created by one single entity or one group versus another group, and it isn't always in the best interest of the whole state, and quite honestly, often leaves the Upper Peninsula out of the whole equation. So it's nice to have our contact down there. And just as a last and final note, I know, Commissioner Frazier, you alluded to it, but and maybe Commissioner Plard, they are a great help to our state representatives, whether it be the senator or the representative, in that, you know, the representatives represent a large area. Matt represents, or Carew represents, Marquette. And often, if our representative can't advocate for something specifically on the city's behalf because he or she might be representing some other position in another part of the county or the area, Matt can at least bring our perspective on its own. So I think it's a great service, and I think it will continue to grow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Plard?
I want to make one more comment, too, that I think is important when it comes to talking about this issue. Our lobbyist has the ears of both sides of the aisle and meets regularly with the Republicans and the Democrats. If we have a Democratic state representative who meets with her caucus all the time but isn't always able to communicate with the other side of the aisle, Matt is able to do that for us, and we'll definitely go to talk to Republicans from time to time and get clarification, get their stance on a particular issue, so that we understand where they're coming from, and then can take that to the Democratic side or vice versa, go from the Democratic side to the Republican side. And sometimes, I think, your day's pretty much that, moving back and forth and back and forth, talking to both sides of the aisle. So that's another advantage that we have. He not only has their ear, but has the ability to communicate right now about a particular subject, again, to both sides of the aisle. And to me, that's invaluable to us.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yeah, thank you, city manager, for your clarification on that, because to me, I'm not a big fan of lobbyists. I'm sorry to say that out loud with you in the room here, Matt. But it makes a lot more sense to me after hearing, you know, how you're being utilized, where the effects are being felt. We need to lean on our state-elected officials, without question. We need to get those people in the trenches for us, working just as hard as anybody else, if not harder. And it does make sense. Thank you for your insight as well, Mr. Plard, on that, because that, you know, those are the areas where we can really put value on the process, whether it's, you know, "Show me a win." Okay, I see where you're coming from now on the other side with your interpretation there. So, you know, I get the dark store question frequently from people out there, friends and non-people that are just passing by, and I say, you know, here's my take on it, but it really is above, way above our pay grade, I can tell you that. But at the same time, it is, it's something that we need to facilitate through our state-elected officials and things along those lines, and I don't see much need to bring it up as a Commission, let's put it that way. That's my personal opinion. So thanks for the interpretation. I appreciate it, and I will vote with a clear conscience. Thank you.
Commissioner Reynolds?
So, last year, well, two years ago, I voted no on this, along with Commissioner Kimbenzie, but I'm going to vote yes this evening, because, one, the city manager has expressed clearly that this does value, it does have a lot of value to him, and it supports him as a city manager. But I did talk to a couple of people over, well, since I knew this was going to be on the agenda on Friday, a couple of our representatives, actually, and they, something that was mentioned, and I don't know if this has been talked about with Matt or not, but possibly talking as far as the city is a replacement tenant for "we," and also what would be bound by environmentally, or "we" would be bound by environmentally in the future. Commissioner Kimbenzie brought this up to me, well, not Commissioner Kimbenzie anymore, Representative Kimbenzie brought this up to me, and if there's anything, we could start formulating that relationship, since he's down there, we're up here, and we're going to have a lot of issues with "we." So she just brought that to my attention and wanted me to bring it to you all.
I can respond. Yes, there's an avenue for Carew to work with us, but on that issue specifically, the city attorney and my office have been working with other entities to try to clarify our responsibilities. I think the city attorney can detail a little bit further, but we're also trying to work with other communities or learn from other communities that have gone through this process to see what steps they took to protect their areas after the plants closed down. So there's several different avenues that we're taking.
One thing about the "we" thing I heard from the Brownfield Committee was several other places that had plants shut down, the company hires a company that takes all responsibility, all the Brownfield stuff, everything, all responsibilities, to tear it down, their facility, and then give it back to "we" or the city, whoever takes charge of it. So I understand that "we" is already looking at companies right now, I assume that's the process probably, but they're looking at companies, like, to take over the plant once it shuts down, then tear it all down, they'll take all responsibility, anything that happens, they take all responsibility, they figure all the fees, and then they tear it down, and then it goes back to ownership with "we" or go back to the city or something like that eventually. So I think it's a complicated process. Hopefully, we can lean on our Rep. to participate in what's going on with it.
Mr. Curdo, I'm in favor of this contract renewal. I think that what you do in Lansing is very valuable for the city of Marquette, and our city staff seems to be always pleased with what you're doing for them, your availability and your knowledge, so it's my take. Is there anyone else? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? That carries, seven-zero. Next new business item is bids for the East Barriga Avenue Extension. City Clerk, could you please give us some background?
Thank you, Mayor. Background. Plants have been developed for the East Barriga Avenue Extension project in accordance with prior planning commission and city commission approval for the Founder's Landing development. The work will consist of the extension of the street, water main, storm sewer main, and multi-use pathway. In addition, on-street parking will be constructed for public use. This project is a result of brownfield development funds and private-public partnership agreements. Construction limits are as follows: Lakeshore Boulevard easterly to the Founder's Landing Boardwalk. Bids for the project were open on August 2, 2018, where contractors responded to our request for bids. Results are summarized below. Engineers estimate $448,285. Heber Construction, $413,275.58. Associated Constructors LLC, $474,797.25. Smith Construction, $4,700, excuse me, $478,466. Overstar Inc., $531,249.50. Tabulation and checking of the bids found one error on a contractor's bid. Error was mathematical and had no bearing on the final outcome. Fiscal effect: The East Barriga Avenue Extension project was approved under the 2018 budget with sufficient funds to cover the cost per brownfield development funding. Recommendation: Award a contract for the construction project of the East Barriga Avenue Extension to Heber Construction Co. in the amount of $413,275.58, based on the quantities and unit prices bid, and authorize city manager to approve unforeseen contingencies in an amount not to exceed 20% of the bid amount. Alternatives as determined by the Commission.
Thank you. Before we go any further, could I have our Director of Community Development, Dennis Stackowitz, perhaps give us some more information?
I'd be glad to, Mayor. I'll be real quick on this one, but this is a I'll be real quick on this one, but this is a planned project that was part of the Brownfield redevelopment plan, and the original plan for the Founder's Landing development. We're actually essentially replacing about 120 feet plus or minus of the existing pavement, if you'll recall, that goes into kind of the dockside marine area, and we're upgrading it with some curbing, and then utilities that are necessary for the One Marquette Place at Founder's Landing. We're also tying in to the bike path and the boardwalk area, and this will tie in as well to the parking lot for the One Marquette Place. All of this was outlined in that Brownfield plan. Bond has been issued for this project, I believe, in 2017, so this, we got held up a little bit, waiting on the Founder's Landing folks to finish some of their development, but we've been communicating with them, as well as the surrounding property owners. We have a verbal commitment to dockside marine to keep at least one lane open. We recognize this is a busy time of year for them, and we're also working with the developers at One Marquette Place, which should be gun luck champion to clean up some of the construction stuff that they have there, so we can get in there and get working at the same time.
Thank you. Mr. Verito, you wish to address us?
Go start the clock, please. It's extremely rude. Frank Jeff Verito, and Mr. Frazier thinks it's funny that the chair isn't even looking at the person addressing him. These are my opinions. You've chosen the lowest bid, congratulations. Of course, the public, and maybe even this board, don't know the attributes of each company versus the other, so long as the project is needed and is done per spec, my concerns are few. However, here's yet another case of a needed depiction not included in the agenda packet, despite all the animosity that this board has bred by not providing adequate depictions in the past, as recently as our last meeting, on four major parcels. In tonight's case, you're awarding a bid for an item which I'm assuming was approved a while back. Maybe there was a depiction in that packet. We still needed one tonight. This project was proposed in the 2018 budget, but I looked back months and couldn't find the item, wasting yet more personal time, because the manager and the members who assembled our agenda on Friday, again failed to include a simple eight-by-eleven drawing. The depiction was needed for obvious public convenience, if for nothing else. This is $413,275,058 of public money. We have a right to review and comment on the documents ahead of the vote, a right which this commission habitually denies our citizens. They motion and vote as if they'd never heard the concerns. You're again asked to stop rushing long enough to reschedule this item and others that you failed to provide adequate depictions for. May the public be warned that even on important items, they motion immediately after the comment, caring less whether they provided the needed materials.
Okay, would someone care to make a motion? Would someone care to make a motion? Commissioner Stonehouse.
I motion to award a contract for the construction project of East Barriga Avenue Extension to Hebert Construction Company, in the amount of $413,275.58, based on the quantities and unit prices bid, and authorize the City Manager to approve unforeseen contingencies in the amount not to exceed 20%, correction, 20% of the bid amount.
Thank you. We need a second. Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Commissioner Stonehouse, anything?
I'm never going to get in a driverless car. It's not going to happen. Watching it right here. My comment would be, this is a relatively small construction project. It cleans up, really, Lake Shore Drive, and that little portion of Barriga Avenue that we indeed own, the rest of it being owned by Dockside Marine. So, and I do agree with Mr. Verito that there should have been a set of plans included within the project packet and the agenda supplement, so it would have been clear to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier, anything?
Like Commissioner Stonehouse said, it's basically just from the, from the end, from the bike path to the lake, that's all they're developing, between Dockside Marine front office and the new warm broker base, they're going to redevelop the whole parking lot. It's going to be all underground stuff, pipes, utilities, all that stuff, and then paved. It needs repaving, it's been in rough shape for a long time. It's a great opportunity for the city to do it, and it's all backed for by the Founder's Landing agreement, so it's a good decision, and I hope everything goes good, and I think the 20%, that's just the case, anything runs over cost, right? Right, City Manager?
Yep, just a quick question. I'm just noticing 20% on this one, and maybe that's the norm. Is 20% the norm for construction projects on the overage?
It is this year, and it's been consistent, 20% for every project this year, due to the asphalt prices, whether we lost a plant, or they lost a plant in Duluth, which puts us at the mercy of much less suppliers, and we've been noticing a big increase in that. And if there is any contingency that would come, that would involve asphalt, obviously we would need more, so it's typically, we float around 10%, but because of asphalt prices this year, we're going at 20.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I know that, I thought it was 10, and it doesn't surprise me, because I've heard of all, being out in the market, I know that asphalt is absolutely bonkers right now, so thanks. Another quick question on that, just for clarification, does the bike path physically continue from where it's terminated now up to the existing bike path, or is that just going to be parking lot?
There will be a portion of bike path that will parallel the One Marquette Place between the parking lot on One Marquette Place and the Dockside Marine property and our extension, but then you'll have to cross the street, the Barriga Extension, to continue on the existing path along Lake Shore Boulevard.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comments? Commissioner Frazier?
Asphalt's expensive, you can always go with concrete, you know.
Okay. Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed. That carries seven zero. Our last new business item of the evening is the City Manager and City Attorney Performance Evaluation Process. City Clerk, could you please give us that?
Thank you, Mayor, background. The city charter requires the city commission to conduct an annual performance review of both the City Manager and the City Attorney. Past practice has been to appoint three commissioners to serve on a committee to review the evaluations completed by all commissioners, and make a recommendation regarding any adjustment to the manager's compensation or terms of employment. The City Attorney is paid on a retainer basis, and the amount of his compensation for legal services is approved as part of the annual budget process. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation: Appoint three commissioners to serve on a committee to review and compile the City Managers' and City Attorney's performance evaluations, and make a recommendation regarding any adjustment to the manager's compensation or terms of employment. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Mr. Verito, you wish to address us on this?
This is Frank Verito, these are my opinions. This is no way a personal attack against Mr. Angeli, who seems well-meaning and friendly, a jokester at times. Joking around is fine, even at meetings, but not when we're facing such serious situations at this time of too rapid growth. Mr. Angeli strikes me as someone who's from Marquette, and maybe hasn't seen enough other places to realize why Marquette's beauty is so special. He doesn't seem to realize the value of our treasures, which 79% of us live here for. Mr. Vita lived in Maryland, in the developing northwest suburbs of DC, where he endured the ultimate crash course in sprawl. His job also brought him to a lot of places, the like of which we don't want up here, and he knew that. He was also accessible to the public, which this manager is not, except before and after our meetings, and two hours per month at the library. His staff tries their best, but he's still not accessible. Incredibly, the fencing lights and cement footings still obstruct the northwest corner of Lighthouse Park. Months more have passed since the most recent string of delays was publicized. We've waited years too long already. All the manager has accomplished there in all this time was to put up "park closed" signs and to remove them months later, initially forgetting one of them. Mr. Vita would have had to have had that fence removed by now. Our manager took a month too long to outfit a very sturdy post at Pitnik Rocks with the apparatus to raise and lower the red flag, when people have died there. The cement footing for the re-located centered flag pole still mars our beach. An error was made by putting it there to begin with against public advice. Money was wasted. If our manager were cognizant of the fragility of our shore, in the 79% majority, these items would be completed. July 30th, the manager's error caused a lot of confusion on the street vacations item by having as his recommendation on the cover sheet to schedule a public hearing. Neither he nor the rest caught the error soon enough. The hearing had already been scheduled July 9th. We've also had problems with Mr. Angeli repeatedly not providing depictions in our packets, selling five Hartwood parcels too hastily against public sentiment, facilitating the destruction of South Beach Park, wasting too much time searching for a solution to the erosion at Shyrus Park, not completing even the most rudimentary elements of the Lighthouse Park actualization, and distracting members and key players during commission discourse. I witness only a fraction of what the manager does. Our roads are under repair, the water runs fine and tastes better than most, despite the fluoride and chlorine. He's earned maybe a C+. I recommend keeping him on for the coming year, with only an inflationary increase if applicable. Now, my apologies to Mr. Angeli. I like him as a person, he just needs to become better attuned to the public, to whom he's ultimately responsible.
Commissioners, would someone care to make a motion? Commissioner Plour.
Your Honor, I move that we appoint three commissioners to serve on a committee to review and compile the City Managers' and City Attorney's performance evaluations, and make a recommendation regarding any adjustment to the manager's compensation or terms of employment.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Plour.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to say that that committee is not the only part of the commission that will help evaluate the City Manager, the whole commission takes part in this. Their job is going to be to compile, as it says in the background, compile the recommendations from the whole, and evaluations from the whole city commission.
Commissioner Reynolds?
The only comment I have is that, I've done this twice before, I know Dave's done it every single time since we've been here, and I'm a little concerned that if we put, like, me and you and Fred on it, and not let the new people experience doing it, especially because you and I will be gone next year, so I'm hoping, like, I would, I would like to see maybe Jenna appointed to the committee. I'm not going to vote no to whoever you choose, or anything like that, but I think that that would be beneficial in the coming years, to have somebody else do it as well.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have to pick three people. I would like to pick myself and Amir Protem, the basic reasons being that we are around the City Manager probably more than others. We see more of what he's doing, what he's accomplishing, what he has to do. Jenna actually sent me an email requesting to be on that committee, she's the only one that did send me an email. I have no problems with her being on this committee, so if Jenna wishes to accept it, I will make her the third person, assuming the Mayor Protem wants to be on it.
That would be wonderful. Thank you, Mayor.
Those are my choices.
Anybody else wish to comment? Mr. Frazier?
Make sure Jenna, you're heard on them. Even though they're sitting next to them, just make sure you're heard on them.
Comments further, any? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed. Carry seven zero. Now we come to our final public comment of the evening, again, a time when you can address the commission. Open public comment, we need name and address. You have three minutes. Anybody wish to address the commission at this time? Do you want to take the podium?
My name is Carolyn Crowley. I live at 436 West Hewitt Avenue in Marquette. I'm a native of the city, and I taught school here for many years. And my concern tonight is regarding our beautiful Presque Isle Island. I know our local city police have been trying to address the traffic concerns that are interfering with people and mobiles going around the island. I appreciate that. We need to address more care of the island. When I grew up, we had a caretaker there, and it was a loving place, where they looked at everything, from safety, to traffic, to nature, to protection, and also giving beautiful advice to people visiting the island. I really think, I know there may be Parks and Rec, and the Presque Isle Advisory Board that might be doing a little homework on this, but right now, I really believe we need to problem-solve on it, not pointing fingers at what we can do, or what we can't do. I know many of you are aware of the problem, and it is a safety issue, and I just wish we could problem-solve, maybe get volunteers, park rangers of some kind. Hopefully, we can afford something in our city budget that will allow that. Presque Isle is our gem, we need to keep it shining, we need to really respect it. And one, on a ending note, I would like to say this, I don't want to leave Marquette when it gets busy. I love tourists coming here, but we really need to problem-solve with our crowds, with all the new traffic coming into town. There's ways to do it. We really need to address how we're going to do it, and not just be overjoyed with all the revenue we're getting. Thank you so much for letting me come and talk, and thank you for all your good work.
Thank you for your observations, very good. Anyone else?
Frank Jeff Verito, these are my opinions. We've recorded too many examples of this board. They refuse to wait on Hartwood and other important items for the survey to be completed, and cared less whether they failed again and again to provide the needed documents in our packets. Few unfinished items appear anymore because of their rush. They're so eager to dispose of items, they approve the first proposals that come along, regardless of whether they're the best fit. July 30th is charioteated as if we'd never get another offer for Parcels 9 through 12. The lack of planning expertise on this board is all too evident. We know this, because none of seven were aware of how Parcel 12 differed from 9 through 11. I'd bet some members didn't know which was which, because they weren't identified by number in the packet, despite endless requests to provide such information. Other residents mention this, too, yet the packets only get worse. In my opinion, this board acted illegally by selling parcels, knowing the public were not given a fair and requested opportunity to view and comment based on the needed information ahead of the vote. This keeps happening on item after item, with this board worsening over time. The man in charge is clueless. Three members touted their Hartwood decisions, pretending the public sided with them. That wasn't till the news poll just two hours later. What a shame the poll wasn't conducted first, or the planning survey. They simply don't listen, according to many residents. Maybe they rushed the decisions ahead of the surveys, because they were afraid of what they'd find. Sentiments that haven't changed in 20 years, but have become more evident with the rampant development and this board's approval of whatever comes along first, rather than waiting for the ideal solution, or for us to view the needed documents. Way back in 1998, I recommended holding protests in front of the main players' homes. An influential member of the Citizens for a Community Lake Shore Group disagreed, but I knew then, just as I do now, that this might be the best and non-violent way to wake these people up to their madness, while we still have plenty worth saving. The same holds true with our bluffs. People are urged to make themselves heard regarding the obliteration of the slope just north of Lower Harbor Park, below 340 East Ridge. It's the Third World, right here in Marquette. I love living on Ridge Street. Mr. Frazier's July 30th response to the contrary made no sense. People from all walks of life are upset by this bluff destruction. Evidence that our male members don't get it are deeply etched on our public record. July 30th, this whole bunch spaced out the fact that they were holding the hearing for street vacation. street vacations. They thought the motion was to schedule a public hearing. This during the public hearing. What a total trip out. They weren't prepared. Let's hear them pacify the roughly 79 percent who disagree with them. They'll be buried in truth at a future meeting.
Anyone else wish to address the commission? Seated, none, we're going to close public comment. We're going to move to comments from the commission. We'll start with Commissioner Reynolds.
Shoot. Okay. My only comment this evening is to Mrs. Crowley. I've heard that many times from residents over this summer, and I think that we all are cognizant that something is going to have to happen in the future. And the only other comment I have is that the Classic Cars on Third is this next weekend. I replaced Dave last year and went and you, like, have to vote on cars and the best ones. It was by far one of the coolest newest events, on top of seeing all these classic cars on Third, the amount of money that was raised for domestic abuse survivors. So just, I think it's from 10 to 4 on Saturday. It's a really cool thing down Third Street to check out. That's the only I got.
Commissioner Plard.
Thank you, your honor. To Mr. Verito, thank you again for proving to us that your ignorance is exceeded only by your bluster. For example, you show up at public comment complaining about not the ability to not be able to comment about something before the vote while you are commenting about something before the vote. You want to talk about serious incongruities? That is not being involved in reality. You were commenting about something before the vote, even though you complained that we don't give you that opportunity. But also want to point out that you've complained about in the past about not having an opportunity to speak to the commission very often, yet you had 12 minutes, which you, very conveniently for most of us, in a lot of ways, wasted. Again, I've had four conversations about you over the last two weeks. Not one of them was in any way, shape, or form positive as far as you're concerned. I don't know what you believe you're doing. They don't know what you believe, what you believe you're doing either. So when you come up to public comment next time, please try to explain to people looking and listening what exactly you're trying to accomplish, what exactly you're doing. Also, I did have an opportunity to get around the city today and over the weekend, and I mentioned to Walt Lindelaah that I had some conversations about art and culture, and there were some really, really good conversations. Some of those were conversations with people that actually live here, some of them were people that have come here for that. And Arts and Culture does a fantastic job. They did come here to see the arts and take part in the culture, the people that I talked to, and they had nothing but great things to say about the city of Marquette and what's going on. And they really did, they loved the butterflies also. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, sonos.
Couple of just quick things. You know, we had a long discussion on having a lobbyist, and, you know, for folks that maybe don't pay as much attention as I think the commissioners do, the legislative environment in Lansing has been crazy. There's more nutcases down there wandering down the streets, all of which are elected officials in this, in this state. It's unbelievable. And some of the crazy pieces of legislation you see flying around, that's a really wicked environment to try and figure out what's happening, what's not happening, what might be something we should be concerned about, what isn't. So certainly, you know, the lobbyist is able to do that for us. He can sort, find the wheat that's kind of lost in the chaff and let the city work from, from what's real and what isn't real. Presque Isle, you know, we're loving it to death, and that's what's really happening. And I don't know how you fix that. Maybe you fix it by saying, "We're only going to let so many cars through, and then we're going to shut the gate at the island. And until so many leave, we don't let any more in." Maybe that's what it comes to. And that's certainly, I think, that the PyPAC committee is going to work its way through and have some solid recommendations, but maybe you go out there and you build a parking lot. Maybe you knock the trees down and you provide parking for everybody along the roads. I don't think that's what you'd want to do. But that really is where we kind of end up, because I don't know what the answer is, other than either limit the flow coming in or provide more room for the flow when they come in. And I don't think either one is what we really want to do. But it's going to be difficult to come up with, I think, a decision that makes sense for everybody. Got to tell you, I love the vibrancy in Marquette. I love the opportunity just to walk downtown on a Saturday afternoon or really any time during the summer particularly, but if you haven't been through the farmer's market, it is really an interesting experience because you feel surrounded by everybody that's happy. I mean, they're pleasant, they're pleased, they're buying stuff, they're enjoying the environment of just being there. And that's something I think is very unique to the city. And it's one of those things that we need to treasure and we need to foster and we need to continue to have it to grow. And I'm just really happy that we have so many groups in town that are doing that. So let me leave you with one last thing. Everybody talked about the umbrellas last year and how spectacular, how photographed, how that put us on the map. You know, there's one city in the Upper Peninsula that is planning on doing that next summer with umbrellas. So I guess, you know, maybe that's, flattery is the most sincerest, yeah, interesting. Maybe they can hang something else, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. So about a week and a half ago, I had an opportunity to tour the city via bus to look at some of the capital improvements we have coming up. I just wanted to say, it sounds like we're going to have to make some tough decisions in the coming weeks and months, looking ahead at my calendar. It's about to get really busy with budget talks, so looking forward to that. Part of that discussion is deciding whether or not we're going to be increasing utility rates, and if so, to what level. No hard and fast answers yet, but it's, it's about to get very interesting up here on the dais, so just, I'm thinking of that going into the next few weeks here. One other thing, on the consent agenda tonight, we approved a liquor license for Crappy Coffee. I reached out to them to see what they were going to do with that, just because I was curious. Crappy Coffee, sorry. My husband also tried to tell me how to say that earlier, but I couldn't quite grasp the fish name. Anyway, they're going to have a small selection of wine and beer and just stay open later in the evening where maybe you don't want an espresso drink, but I'm impressed with all the businesses popping up and expanding in town, and I wish them the best of luck. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Fraser.
You go back to the PyPAC issues. Mr. Schlegel, I have a kind of relationship with PyPAC. We were both on PyPAC back in the day, and we still have a lot of friends on the board. And they worked really hard on all the decisions. They're working on decisions right now, trying to figure out everything to do with the island. And, you know, it's near during my heart, one of my great-grandfathers, Peter Wright, was one of the help founders of that island, so it's great to see everything going. The parking is an issue. A friend of mine sent me a message earlier during the meeting saying parking is still bad on the island, even with all the parking permits setting up, so they're working on, they'll figure out somebody around. And anybody that's complained, like some people do in the audience about development of Marquette, just look back at the old pictures. I had some room work today, and I look back at the old pictures you can find online and see about forward design with all the old oil fields. Used to be three ore docks downtown. Matson Park was not a big grassy area with a playground like it is now and a beautiful marina. It was a coal dock, full of nothing but coal. And old Ridge Street was just, I mean, there's a couple houses up there, but that's it. The churches are still there, and the roads are still barely there, but it was all just a coal dock. The whole Lower Harbor from Lakeshore Boulevard to the lake was all coal, piles and piles of coal, and there's a huge ore dock there, and it was all development. Commercial development in the city was very big back then, just the way the city was founded, and just, if I didn't complain about development, just look back in the architect that built 911, the One Marketplace, said, "He wants to put pictures of what used to be there." Instead of the nice hotel they're putting up in the One Marketplace, they want to put pictures of the oil tanks. There's at least six oil tanks down there back in the day. If you look back at pictures, you'll find them. Now as beautiful it is these days, so I think the view back then was a lot worse than it is now, and just something to look at. And visitors will enjoy the arts. Arts community is great. I want to, I recommend Walt does a great job with everything, and Mike Plard helps him out once in a while. And Fred, you're wondering why you're breaking into it. You took a radio host to figure that out for you. You know, I think he could figure that microphone's out a little bit for you. And I think everyone's going to, said that if you go to the visitors, we've been busy as heck, and construction's been big all over the city. So bids are higher for local. I enjoy going to local bids, but since the local guys are just busy. We've got a lot of development going on, and you say about butterflies. We built one roundabout, somebody else built two roundabouts, now Mike built six. So you think about somebody that could hurt the cities, what's next? So we built six roundabouts after somebody built two, so I wonder what's next.
Thank you. Commissioner Schlegel.
Thank you. I could digress, and I'm not going to do that, but, John, I'm going to pass on the easy, low-hanging fruit here. Carolyn, thank you for bringing up the concern. Six years on Presque Isle advisory, same issues. And this is the time, I think, that we need to take a very, very serious look at our public transit. Marktran is not getting done what the city itself needs to have done. I'm going to throw this out there. Throw an egg at me if you want, but we have got to have a cycled public transit bus system that goes between, whether, you know, we can make it however, how large we want it, but from hotels to downtown to the beaches out around Presque Isle at drop-off points. We need to have it on an hourly or half-hour schedule that is going to allow us to leave our cars in parking lots, leave them outside of even the city limits and, you know, eliminate the parking congestion that we are all so, you know, concerned about. I've had several conversations with a lot of great people in the community that see this and have seen it coming, and it's nothing against what Marktran does for the county, but I just see it as a humongous waste of money for us as far as getting done what we truly need to have done to eliminate parking congestion within the city limits and, and really give our tourism-based visitors an easy outlet to either throw a bike on the front or the back of one of these things and go into town from a hotel that's maybe on the outskirts of the limits or township, and really just get after it and do it right. You know, why not? If I had a family of six and I wanted to go ahead and get on a bus and go down to Presque Isle and then go down to downtown, I wouldn't have a problem buying a day pass. I wouldn't have a problem buying a yearly pass, even as a resident, in doing that. It would be much more functional. I know, I'm opening up a can of worms, that people are going to have to really sit there and try and digest, but this is something that if we do it on a, and maybe it's a seasonal issue, obviously, I think it would be a seasonal issue, but this is one way that we can eliminate a lot of congestion. Get people right to, you know, right to where they want to be, have, have a designated pickup and drop-off points on the hour, on the half-hour, whatever it might be, and really get this place moving in the right direction without moving a bunch of rubber tires on our roads. So let's, let's think about that, see what we can do. I know, John, you're dealing with it over at Parks and Rec, you got your head wrapped around it, and it's like dealing with Hartwood. Nobody wants to hear it come up because you know it's just going to be a son of a gun to deal with, but it is, it's on, it's on the radar. Other than that, I was pretty excited about the fact that I had six friends come up for the Orta Shore this weekend, and because I had commitments through work and the county fair, I didn't get to see any of them, but they had nothing but amazing things to say about our community, insofar as to say, "Why aren't I living here?" Well, I told them, "Because I'm not going to let you." But it was, and they were first timers, most of them were first timers, big into the bike scenes, Wisconsin, Minnesota, and, and I think that Orta Shore is not just yet another beautiful feather in our cap of activities that, that ramp up Marquette, Marquette County and just showcase its, its all-encompassing greatness. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. This Thursday is Music on Third Street. It's a way to spend a delightful evening going up and down Third Street. There's bands playing every block. And on this Saturday, as Commissioner Reynolds says, is the car show. I think it's at noon it starts, noon to 4:00. Double-check that, but it is Saturday. I believe Harbor Fest is the 23rd through the 25th, which is a week from this Thursday. Always a fun time down in Matson Park. At our next meeting, two weeks from tonight, the group will be entertaining and honoring and welcoming the Japanese delegation from Higashiomi. It's always a nice, formal affair, cute if you want to call it that, but it'll be an interesting meeting. Lastly, just again, Ms. Brum said there will be a wheelchair accessible demonstration Wednesday at 2:00 PM at Lambrus Park. Is that correct? It is correct. That's all I have. City manager, you?
Thank you. I always have something. Comment on Presque Isle, yes, we have restricted parking, and I wanted, I was going to remind the public of that before it actually came out as a topic of discussion tonight. The parking has been a problem for a couple of years now, and we are restricting it on the hillside, at least for now, of Peter White Drive as you near the Black Rocks area. Police Department has been out rather effectively writing tickets, and I will warn everybody or anybody that's listening that if citations don't seem to be the solution, towing is our next step. With that said, I just wanted to throw it out that actually John and I have had conversations, and we don't believe it's too far in the future when you're going to see the opposite of what it is now, when the island is made for walking and we have hours open for driving. I mean, right now, it's open for driving and we shut it down for walking, so, I mean, quite literally, you could see that in the future. And you'll also, maybe you've noted or maybe you haven't, but we, through community development, have worked with PyPAC to place signage and in various ways funnel the foot traffic around Black Rocks to help with the erosion out there. Now, you might see the signs and think they're a little, they stick out a little bit, but we feel we have to put that kind of signage up to get people to really pay attention. It's really not bad-looking signage, it's just is not very conducive to that, to that area, but we're hoping it works. So we're trying to address all those problems at the island. All of us recognize the influx of, in popularity for that location. I'm happy to tell you that the governor's office and the attorney general has, general has approved our language for the charter amendment, which will be on the ballot in November for the general election. And excuse me, just to remind everybody that that is to ask the public to approve changing the way we calculate our payment in lieu of taxes with the BLP. We are asking to change from a tax-assessed calculation to a percent of gross sales type To address the Lighthouse property one more time, if you recall, the commission approved transferring $1 million from a previous project earlier this year to help with the development of the lighthouse, which was what we needed to get started. I mean, we had no money at all attributed to that, that refurbishing, but the commission agreed to that change in the capital improvements. And we have planned for this fall, and I think I've mentioned this at other meetings, but I will mention again that the bike path will be relocated yet before the snow flies. The fencing will be removed. Some brush will be cleaned up and things of that nature. We are preparing a larger plan for reconstruction of the entire parking area, including adjacent to the Maritime Museum, as well as improving the entrance from Arch Street into the park and possibly improving the roadway towards Bacardi's Cove. All that should be in place and ready to go by the time the snow melts next spring. So from my perspective, we're moving very quickly in that regard in addressing that park. Just a friendly reminder to the commission that the Heartland parcel sales that you approved, us moving forward with a couple of meetings ago, are still on our list of things to do, and we hope to have them backed you soon. That's all I have. We are adjourned.
We are adjourned.